Welcome, welcome. We've got Europe in the house. We've got LA in the house. I see England in the house. I'm just gonna name it off the top. You'll notice that I have half of a voice. And I think this is part of the recalibration, which is the exact theme that we are going to dive into today. And so sometimes it takes just letting our bodies do what it needs to do to get to where we need to go. So I'm in full trust, full surrender here, that this is exactly what was meant to be here in this space with y'all that arrived in this moment in time. And my invitation is for us to allow time and space to collapse all together and really dive into the spirit and the soul that is underneath all of us. If you haven't already, turn those cameras on. I'm gonna put y'all in, let me see, gallery mode, so I can see those beautiful faces. If you can't, that's okay, but if you can, I'd love to see you. Good morning/afternoon for Europe. Hi Jean, hi Amanda, Connie, yes Connie, Angie, Christine, Lea, Lisa, Annie, Nature, okay Natasha, Sarah, yes Alexandra, RV, Charlotte, Jean, and everybody else that is in here. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you for being here. This is my heart on a platter. I'm gonna give you all of it today, and we're gonna do some epic portal activations together as we enter the Lions Gate tomorrow. Y'all ready for the Lions Gate? Yes, yeah, big stuff coming through, and this is a big one. This is not only our year to start moving into 5D, which I know some of us on this call have already put one foot there, 1 in 3D, 1 in 5D, and we're like, ugh. This is part of the recalibration, I think. My body, I just came back, for those of you that know, I just came back from doing the Aquarian Renaissance, and we did, I did seven countries in like, one month. So my body is trying to land back home here in LA. And we did a lot of Architect, 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 Architect. It was like, again, and again, and again. And I feel like my body went too far one way, and I'm like, ugh. I need to balance it back, you know? It's one thing to be not open to something, and then too open to something, and then finding what actually resonates for your body, and really trusting that you are your most profound architect you could ever have. Anything that you need is already right inside of your body. It's always been there. It will always be there. And I love these spaces, because these are spaces where we get to come together as a collective to remember how freaking powerful we all are when we take the shit out, the noise away, stop reaching outside of ourselves for everything, and actually trust and surrender that you have everything you could ever need right inside of your body. And so for those of you that are using the Architect, which I still do, I really love it, use it to your discretion. Do not lose who you are by using it too much. Remember that you already have those answers. They're within you. And so using it as a resonant mirror or reflector when it's needed is perfect. But when you feel you are leaning, and anytime we lean on anything, somebody, something, a tool, a this, a that, check, check in with the body. What is it that I actually need? So I want to invite this into the space. I want us to recalibrate. When you think of the word recalibrate, what does that mean to you guys? Put it in the chat. Or maybe another word, what are you wanting to recalibrate today? Let's get specific. Let's get intentional with why we're doing this breath session. What is here? What are we wanting to recalibrate today? What's been out of balance? What has not been resonating? Where has the dissonance been? And how can we start to shift it? It reminds me, I was saying to, was it Katie? My assistants on here, Katie. It was either Katie or my mom was talking just before this call. That recalibration for me feels like if you were to take a bucket of sand, and you know, you kind of go like this, and the sand perfectly starts to align. It's like that inside the body, just like, just bringing ourselves back to who we are. Yeah, let me check this chat here. I haven't been looking. Blessings from Roscommon, Ireland. Okay, I was just in Ireland, by the way, and it's a beautiful, magical, magical country. So I still have Ireland codes coming through my body. And I bought this cute little mug too, but it broke. I was so sad. But this is a cute little Ireland mug that I got, so maybe I can glue it back together. We'll see. All right, Georgia, let's see, let's see, let's see. Oh wow, I'm missing the rest. Slowing down, pure clarity. Yes, push to let, ah, yes, just to let. Expectations are getting the best of me. Yeah, expectations rob joy. There's no way joy can exist when there's expectations. You know, having boundaries is one thing. Having expectations literally takes and sucks any of the joy that we can have out of things. So it's beautiful to recognize, when am I doing that? Because all of us do it. I do it all the time, especially as a perfectionist, high achiever. I'm always wanting things to look great, to feel great. Sometimes we just have to let go of control and let things be what they are. Um, what else we got in here? Back to the center, reset. Yeah, a reset, bringing myself back home to me. Yeah, let this be a space for us to come home. And instead of feeling like we have to become something, like can we find safety in unbecoming everything we always thought we were supposed to be? That might feel really scary. That might not feel safe at all. And so my invitation, as we get into breath work today, is to take the baby sips, little sips into the unknown. Am I safe here? Because sometimes, again, the extremist, the all or nothing mentality, I've been there. And I notice when I start to do that, I'm like, oh, I'm going extreme. Dial it back, recalibrate. What do I need now? Right? Um, how's everyone feeling right now? Let's put that in the chat. In radical honesty and raw vulnerability without putting on a face or a mask. What is here? What do we feel? What is current and present and so true for you? Great, yeah, nice Angie. Feel great? Great and tiredness. Yeah, yeah, I hear that Christine. What else is here for y'all? What is present and available? Stressed and unsettled. Yeah, I hear you. It's hard to not feel stressed and unsettled when everything around us is moving and pivoting and changing so quickly. And this is where we have to find that home within ourselves on a consistent basis so that we can continue to feel at ease in our body despite all the outside circumstances that we do not have control over. Grounded, fatigue, sacral chakra discomfort. Yeah, Lisa. My invitation in the breath work too is to breathe into your sacral chakra throughout the whole breath work, if you can, and really send it, send it there. Yeah. Um, raw, yeah Veronica, raw, you know? I lost my voice earlier this year, and I had to do a keynote speech, but I had less. I had like half of this. And I was like squeaking on the stage. And I felt so raw. My perfectionist was pissed. She's like, god damn it, like today, why in any other day you can make your freaking voice? Barely get a sound out. And it was a big lesson for me because I don't feel when I walked on the stage, what I wanted to do landed. And it's because I sat in my anxiety of feeling like I wasn't enough because I didn't have my voice. And what I've noticed is it's not what we say, it's the resonance of what we are saying. It's the resonance of people felt that I was uncomfortable, that I didn't have a voice, and I was upset. So that's what I gave everybody, right? And so instead, it's like, okay, but why am I here? I'm not here to make my anxiety feel better. I'm on this stage to help share a message for other people. So when we take ourselves outside of our own shit, we're able to actually hold the spaces so much more deeply and more impactful and with our hearts because we've taken out that part of us. But also nurture that little sweet child because she gets anxious too. So this is normal as well, but just to note and have awareness around that. Presence, 100% yes Lisa, went to much feeling three chakras. Okay, yeah, I feel out of balance. Beautiful. This is a perfect space for you. So for those of you who are meeting me for the first time, my name is Michelle Argus. I am a Symbiotic Embodiment Coach, Breathwork Practitioner, and someone who really values integration of this amazing wisdom and knowledge that you carry inside your body. I know we reach outside sometimes to, like, knowledge is great, and our brains are like, ooh, I want to learn more. And it's so beautiful. Our curiosity is so stunning. But also, there needs to be space for that information to actually land into our bodies and create safety so that we can nurture and give that shift and change that our bodies are desiring. So that's what I do. I also speak, I've now spoken pretty much worldwide, and most importantly, breath work, which is the love of my life. That's the love of my life, is breath work. It not only changed my life, it changed, I've seen it, I've seen the transformation in the spaces that I've held from in person to online on how someone starts to see themselves, like the true, real version. And that is not in the mind. It's always in our heart. And so my invitation today, even right now, like as you're listening, just see, can we sink from here to here? Can we listen from the heart space? Can the heart open while we're in this space together for the next? I'm gonna keep you guys for about, probably an hour, okay? Probably like 45 minutes to an hour. We have 45 minutes, and then we'll go into a Q and A at the end, if you guys want to stay. When we live in our hearts, holy shit, does life get good? And it's not easy to stay there, so I just want to acknowledge that too. It's hard. It's hard to stay there. So it, what we can control is what are the things that keep us in our heart? Like what are the things? Is it your animal? Is it connection? Is it physical touch? Is it nature? Like what do you need to get into the heart space? So you can live and breathe and move through that lens? Because when you do and you feel in your alignment, which two shakes if you guys know, when you've been in your alignment, you're like, holy crap, I'm in it right now. Yeah, you know when that arrives, right? And so, but how can we stay there? How do we maximize the amount of time that we spend in this beautiful heart of ours? So, oh, also, I want to mention something too. I do have an offering today too. I'm gonna mention it off the top, and I'll talk about it more at the end. But I have 50% off of SheCode. SheCode is a women, so sorry for the men that are on here. It's not for you. This one's for the ladies. 50%, that's $777 off. And we pushed it. It was supposed to start in June, and it got pushed to September. I know it was in divine alignment. And so if that is something you're curious about, Katie's gonna put a link in the chat here so you guys can take a peek at that. For anyone who signs up for it by 12 o'clock today PST, it's 50% off. Anyone who signs up for it by tomorrow, I think it was 12 PM PST, we have 40% off. So we'll send this all to you guys at the end, but I just wanted to sprinkle a little bit of that in here right now, in case it is something you wanted to jump into. I'll tell you more about it. Okay, so breath work. Who in here has not done breath work before? Who's this first time? Everyone's done it. Charlotte, I see you. Hi, beautiful. Hi Natalia. Hi Lauren. Hi RV. Yeah, okay, so everyone's done breath work? Cool, love it. Have we done the holotropic style breath work? Okay, so for those of you that are sitting up, you will eventually want to lie down. I'm gonna give some explanations first, about five minutes. I'm gonna chat and kind of go over a couple things. But eventually, you'll want to lie down. And if you can, put your camera on. I promise it'll help me attune to this field so much deeper because I can see and energetically feel what's kind of going on in the field. If you can't today, that's okay too. Um, so breath work is the most powerful, quickest way to get out of the mind and get into the body. What we do is we normally are in our conscious mind, so when we're doing this conscious, connected breath, it starts to allow you to tune this out and really dive into the heart space. And that is a space that is judgment free. It feels so freaking good because the mind wants to judge. The mind holds all the emotions. The mind holds all the judgments and the attachments. But when we get into our body, there's actually so much spaciousness to actually hear what your needs are. And the truth is, every person on this call has a need and an unmet need. Even today, every day, we have unmet needs. But how the heck can we hear it if there's too much outside noise? We're so disconnected from our bodies. So we're trying to find out, figure out, why do I feel disconnected from my body versus actually feeling into the disconnection? Allowing the disconnection, creating space for the disconnection, and then listening, and then recreating resonance within the body. We're gonna do two types of breath today. The first, I call it a halo active breath, so that's a nice inhale through the nose. And exhaling out the mouth, like you're blowing through a straw. Yeah, inhale. Exhale. And we'll continue with this rhythm and pattern, okay? You're gonna hear me cue you, but I invite you to stop listening to me and start to listen to your body. Let me be your cheerleader. So if sometimes you kind of go off, or sometimes we get out of the body, we're like, wee, this is fun over here and feels really good. We can't heal when we're outside of the body. So just a reminder, sometimes I'll come in and say, all right, you know, coming back into the body, coming back to the breath, okay? Um, different, oh, the second type of breath is going to be a triactive breath. So if you put one hand on your chelly, and your breath, your chelly, your chest, and your belly. Well, let me stand up so I can show you a little bit better. This is the triactive breath, all with the mouth. You're gonna go belly, chest, exhale. Good, belly, chest, exhale. One more. And you'll continue this rhythm and pattern. My invitation for you is not to listen to the speed and the rhythm that I'm going at or the music. You can pick your own, feel into the resonance of your own body and the rhythm that you need. But I invite you not to stop the breath. And there's gonna be moments of fear or challenge that show up in breath work. And anyone who's done breath work before, I bet before getting on this call, there might have been a slight bit of resistance before breath work because there's always something there, and you're like, oh, what am I gonna see today? And the beauty is, you have no idea until we get there because this is trying to think of what the experience is gonna look like, yet the body is going to actually provide you what you need today. So I'm inviting trust into the space as well as we dive into our edges. I also want to say, again, the extremist mentality, if that happens or resonates for any of you on this call, you don't have to go too fit, too fast, too quick. There's beauty in taking a peek, oof, is this an edge or is this my fear? So when you notice, oh my God, my hands are cramping, fear's coming up, I don't like this, this is too much. Is it too much? Sit there. Is this that my mind thinks it is? Or is my body genuinely telling me dial it back? Because if the body says dial it back, you do that. Listen to this beautiful body. Um, so I'll go over some physical sensations too. I name it, no matter how many times you guys have done breath work. I love when people say it to me, even when I'm a guest in someone else's breath work, because it shocks me every time when I get something called tetany, okay? So for those of you that don't know, this is tetany. It's your CO2 and your oxygen moving really quickly in the body. If that happens, just know you are safe, okay? So you can tell your mind, I am so safe. If you don't love the feeling, there's two options you can do. Slow the breath down, or a beautiful vocal release. I'll try to show you guys my vocal release right now, but it might come out in like a squeak, okay? But here are some options you guys have. One is a big, beautiful sigh. So if you want to try that, we'll do it together. A nice big inhale. And a nice big sigh. Yeah, woof, letting it all out, okay? If you didn't try it just now, I invite you to, let's try it all together right now. Even if you're like, ugh, I don't know about that. That sounds weird to me if it doesn't feel good. Or you're like, oh, check in, why does that not feel good for me? Why can't I give myself the full expression that I need in this moment? And maybe you don't need it, but let's try it and see. So let's go ahead and take a nice inhale together. And a big, beautiful exhale. Letting it all out, letting it all out, letting it all out, all of it, all of it, all of it. Yeah, beautiful Marlene. Yeah, beautiful. Good, 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 okay? So the second you can do is a shh, and I love to use this when I'm feeling overwhelmed. So if you feel like your edge is being pushed, you can invite a nice shh on your exhale. We can try that together. A nice inhale. Yeah, if I was doing breath work today, I think I would stick to that the whole way. Today, I'm feeling really juicy, yummy, and soft, so I feel like that's what I would do. So if that's what you need, do it. Like I said, I'm gonna invite different breaths, and if you're like, ooh, I like the first breath better. I want to go back to that, do it. And if you feel like you need to move your body, and you're like, woo, and a whole, full thing, go for it. Like I'm so here to cheerlead for you, and just know that when you are in your emotions, which are very likely to come up, it could be joy, you could be laughing your ass off, you could be crying, you could be angry, let them be here. Let her, let him be fully here. Like if you feel safe and comfortable, and know that I'm holding zero judgment on my hand, and I'm fully holding you in this space, okay? And I promise in the seven, by seven minutes of breath work, all that judgments can start to just go, she just melts, she just starts to come off, and it feels so, so good. The other thing I want to name on this call too is if anyone has a history of seizures or any heart conditions, or could be pregnant today, please do not do the holotropic style breath. What you can do today is listen to the playlist I made for you guys this morning. And you can do that first breath, but you just do it very gently and very slowly for the whole session. So it'd just be a... Okay, and you can just stay there and enjoy the resonance of the space. Trying to think if there's anything else I'd love to mention before we start. It's good to see you. Hi Annette. Oh, I love seeing so many familiar faces and new faces. This is great. All right, y'all, so what we're gonna do is, hi, Stoggi, I see you. Oh my goodness. I'm having like Ibiza flashbacks. Some of you I saw in all these different countries. It's so cool how we can come together in one space and do some epic shit together. So, um, let's go ahead and lie down. So if you can, I'll give you a minute to kind of maybe position the camera if you do choose to keep it on, which I would love if you can. Um, and then get yourself in a comfortable position. If for some reason you can't hear my music, which you should, we tested it beforehand. Just give me like a, you can write in the chat. Sometimes it might be your own volume, and everyone's volume's different too. So you might just want to maneuver your volume if you need. And I'm gonna try my best to have a voice throughout this whole practice.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, that's beautiful. I'm gonna mute you, Annette. I just had you unmuted. There we go. Oh my goodness. Oh wow, there's, oh, there's a whole nother, who else is in here? Natalia, Delmar, Sue Ann, oh my goodness, Maureen, Esther. All right, I didn't realize there was a page two, Jean. I only saw my gallery of page one. So, so beautiful to have you all in here. My heart is like exploding right now. Um, but yeah, so let's get into this beautiful practice together. I'm gonna go ahead and start my music. Make sure on audio. Here we are. Okay, and just find yourself in a beautiful, comfortable position, lying down. If you can have nothing under the neck if possible. If you need a pillow, that's okay. If you happen to have a sore back, putting something under the knees might feel really good. And just, can everyone hear me? Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me, and the music as well. Okay, beautiful, amazing. Ah, so let's just give ourselves 40 minutes of pure presence, pure awareness, pure unconditional space, allowing time to collapse as a collective. And just before we start, maybe just noticing your awareness, noticing how the body is in this moment. Maybe there's a furry animal hanging around you on your belly or by your side. And just feeling so much gratitude for every single emotion that we get to feel and how incredible it is that we get to have this amazing human experience. The joy, the sadness, the anger. And remember that we chose this. We chose to have this beautiful experience, full spectrum, all of it. And so in this moment, just starting to really notice the physical body, maybe noticing how you've placed your hands, noticing the position you are in. Do you feel open or closed? And without feeling the need to shift or move or change anything, may you allow yourself to be exactly where you are. And maybe noticing the rhythm and the pulse of your heart in the center of your chest. And before we start to breathe, thinking of a word and intention we're calling into the space. We want to breathe life into and through. Beautiful. Whether that's clarity, reverence, resonance. What is it that your body needs to calibrate? Where do we feel dissonance? Again, just noticing without judgment and just feeling thankful for the polarity and for going sometimes too far to know when to dial it back. These beautiful polarities that we get to experience. Good. And then checking in with your emotional capacity to feel today. Do we feel open or closed? Do we feel heard? What is the unmet need that you have today in this moment? In radical honesty, taking off the veil. And then checking in with our connection to spirit, to source. Feeling into our receptivity in this moment. Do we feel open to receive? And with that, we'll start with our very first breath, with the halo breath. A nice, beautiful inhale through the nose. And a nice sigh. Beautiful. Continuing with this breath. Inhale. Filling up the lungs, exhaling that all out. Letting it all go. Beautiful. Taking that next breath of air. Beautiful inhale. And a nice, big exhale. Feeling the golden light coming in through your breath. Feeling it coming in through the nose, allowing the receptivity of this golden light. There you are. So good, Rea. Nice, beautiful Dani. Exhaling that out. May we start to allow softness and surrender into the breath as we get going. To allow the body and the spirit a place to land here. Grounding ourselves into the earth, feeling the physical support underneath us as we take our first breaths. There you go. Inhale. Beautiful, big exhale. Yeah, letting her go. Let him feel so free. Letting go of the idea that you have to get somewhere. Can you dial it back and allow yourself to collapse into this moment? This space and this time. There you are. Beautiful. Inhale. And a nice, big sigh. Good. Let's go ahead and take a nice sip of air, holding it at the top when you get there. Big sip. And hold. Sipping in more air. Hold. And allowing the energy to move through you, holding your breath. Keep holding. You got this. And just noticing, where is your energy? Where is the breath starting to guide you? If you listen to your body physically, where is it taking you? Silencing the mind, opening the heart, where do you want to go? Can you hear the whispers of your body? Yeah, there you are. And when you feel ready, we're gonna let it go all together in three, two, one, letting out the golden lights. Letting it all go, surrendering the breath out. There you are. You are so safe in this space. You are so safe to breathe. We're gonna start with that three-part breath, all with the mouth. Belly, chest, exhale. Beautiful. Belly, chest, exhale. Without it being a race, can we go nice and slow here? Belly, filling up our lungs, chest all the way. Exhaling it all out, all of your air, all of your air. So good. Belly, chest, exhale. Beautiful. Continuing with this rhythm. Again, you don't have to follow me. Let me be your guide. Let me be your cheerleader. But you get to choose what Again, you don't have to follow me. Let me be your guide. Let me be your cheerleader, but you get to choose what feels so good in your body. How do you want to breathe? Is it soft? Is it gentle? Is it a pick-me-up? Is it strong? There you are. Allow yourself to speak here. Allow your soul to resonate. There you are. Wow, this looks so good on you. Beautiful. There she is. Let him take up space. There you are. Let them be in this experience. Maybe it's something different than you thought. That is perfect. That's exactly where we want to be. There you are. Good. Just noticing, is giving yourself a voice and edge? And if it is, maybe can you just give yourself a small voice to start, just seeing if that feels good? There you are. So good. Taking a nice inhale. Let's hold it at the top. Big inhale. And hold. There you are. Good. Sipping more air. And hold. Holding the resonance here, allowing the resonance to move through your body, noticing where the dissonance might be. Let it scoop and hold the dissonance. And when you're there, can you create more space for the part of your body that is feeling tight or resistant? Can you allow this beautiful cloud to create more space there? And can you say, "I'm listening"? What is it that you need? I'm so here for you. Good. What is your body saying? And when that gets clear for you, I want you to exhale for that part of your body as loudly as you need, as softly as you need. You get to choose. We're gonna do it together here. In three, two, one, big, beautiful exhale. Maybe shaking out the hands. Yes. There you are. Good. Getting ready and we're gonna start again with that three-part breath. Here we go, picking it up. Belly, chest, exhale. Good. Belly, chest, exhale. And just noticing where in your body may, might be cramping up or feeling tight. Can you send your air to that area? Get intentional here. What brought you to this phone call? What made you say yes to being here? And can you carry that throughout your entire session, your yes? Even in the fear, continuing to say yes to yourself. What does that feel like? Beautiful Annette. Good Alexandra. Nice Angie. So good Maureen. Keep it going. Good Patricia. Holding you Natalia. Good. Keep that going. Beautiful Pete. Keep it going. Trying something new. What do you need here? Get clear. Allow your body to really speak. There you are. Beautiful Natasha. Yes Erica. Good Howard. Good. Belly, chest, exhale. Remember, this is not a race. This is an unbecoming. This is a resonance. Good, there you are. Beautiful Anne. Good Sue Ann. There you are. Picking up speed if that feels good for your body, allowing your full body to really be in the space. What intelligence is coming through? What inner knowing is here? What do you just know? It's not a thought. And when we're in that space, our creativity, our play can open. New neural pathways start to show themselves, but we need to feel safe. So let's breathe safety into the body using our air. There you are. Continuing to show up one breath at a time. That's all you need. Not worrying about the next breath, just this one right now. There you go. Yeah, there you are. Letting that go. Ridding of the judgment, using your voice to literally unlayer any shame that might be here, any restrictions. Opening up more space in the body. Here we go. Belly, chest, exhale. Good. Keep it going y'all. You're doing so good. I'm right here. I got you. Here we go. Belly, chest, exhale. Good. Continuing to trust one breath at a time, noticing how every breath is unique and different. It is not the same. Good. Good. This is not repetition. This is uniqueness. This is newness. Allowing newness to come in through every breath that you take. There you are. Good. Beautiful. Good. Keep it going. Belly, chest, exhale. Remembering this golden light, pulling the golden light in through the mouth, then sending it back out, your reception into projection, allowing that here in the space. There you are. Good. Breathe in the receptivity. And sending out the projective, beautiful golden light back out to the universe. There you go. Give it back, give it back. It is a beautiful give and take. There you are. Good. Beautiful y'all. Keep this going. Remembering my reminder, you can slow it down if you need. A reminder to continue to listen to your resonance. Beautiful Annette. Good Angie. I got you. I'm right here. Allowing freedom in your body, full liberation, who you actually are. Can you allow them to be here? If there was no limitation, what would that look like in your body? How would you want to move? How would you want to breathe? There you are. Beautiful Christine. Good Annie. Good. Keep it going. Y'all, you got this. You gave yourself a gift today. Continue to gift yourself one breath at a time. Good. And remember, if you find yourself coming outside of the body, forgiveness, but come back in. Allow yourself to come back in if that means to go softer and more gentle. Do that, but stay. Let your body know you are safe to stay. Good. Beautiful Charlotte. Good. Really trusting that inner rhythm. Your own blueprint. Nobody can tell you how you should breathe. No one can tell you what it's supposed to look like. There you are. Beautiful nature. So good. Good. Beautiful Howard. Good Angie. Nice Lauren. Good. Keep it going. Few more breaths here. Let's let out a big sigh if that feels good. Maybe sticking out your tongue. Yeah, letting it all go. Let it all go. Let it all go. Good. All of it, all of it. Beautiful Patricia. Anne sad. Good Danny. And then on your next inhale, when you've let all of it go, let's take a big inhale and hold it at the top. Big inhale. And hold. Hold this feeling. Let the energy move. And if you feel fear, can you surrender into the fear and let it guide you? Where is it taking you in your body here? Holding your breath. Continue to hold. Good. Good, good, good. There you are. Beautiful. Good. Holding the breath. You'll be surprised how long you can hold your breath. And noticing where the tingles are taking you. Noticing where you might feel any form of pain or joy in this moment. Where do you feel her? Where do you feel them? Where do you feel him? Where are you? Yes. And when you want to give yourself the expression, move the pain, move the joy through you. We're gonna open our mouths. We're gonna exhale all together in three, in two, in one, big, beautiful exhale. Nice big scream if that's what you need. Good. Letting it all go. There you are. Beautiful y'all. This looks so good. Keep it going. Let's allow some joy codes to come through. If joy had a color, what color would that be for you? And can you start to breathe that color in through your receptivity in the mouth? Sending that color back out. I'm picking up on yellow right now. I'm adding in some yellow into the space. Let's go. There you are. Can you allow joy, space for joy, even if you feel pain here? Allowing release of tears, laughter, anger. What is it? What do you need? Good. Keep that breath going. She's got you. She's holding you so tenderly. Let him know you are so listening. You are right here. You're not going anywhere. Not this time. Nope. Good. Beautiful. Belly, chest, exhale. Beautiful Marlene. Good Jessie. Keep that going. I've got you. I am right here. You are so safe. I promise. And if your mind tries to tell you otherwise, just know your body is so much more wise. There you go. Good Leah. Beautiful. You got this. And when your mind wants to think of the next moment, dial it back. Come back to this gift. Gift yourself one breath at a time. There you are. Good. And if you need to wiggle your fingers, you can do it. If you feel you look like you want to shake your hands or move your body or caress your arms or caress your body, just know you are so welcome to be in your fullness in this moment. What does that look like for you? Yeah. She is so powerful. He is magic. Let him be here. Yes, there you are. Here we go. Yeah, letting go of the mind, continuing to lean into the body. I can see the field starting to open so beautifully. Wow. Good. And maybe the color wants to change. Maybe that initial color is changing without you even thinking of a color. And just witnessing and noticing what texture is here for you? What colors, what resonance is taking you through your practice? Yes. Freedom baby. What does that feel like in the body? Letting go of every expectation, every anticipation. Let it melt. Bye. See you later. And coming back into presence. Yes. Good. There you are. Freedom baby. Yeah. And there's freedom. Freedom doesn't just mean feeling happy. Freedom means actually being able to express what's actually here. And that might be great pain. And just allowing that to move through your body. You are so, so safe to do so. Good. Beautiful Angie. Yes Danny. Good. Beautiful. Continuing to shake anything off if you need it. But continuing the breath. If you notice that you stopped breathing, just come back to your breath. There you go. Back into the body. There you go. Beautiful. Couple more really deep breaths. Beautiful Connie. Good. Another one. Let's do one more and hold it at the top. When you get there, big, beautiful inhale. And hold. Hold this. Hold this feeling of what it's like to fully become free. Good. Holding your breath here. Pure freedom. You are every type of architect you could ever want to be. It is so inside of you. It is expressing through you. It has always been there. It'll always be there, no matter what. Good. Hold this part. Hold a little longer if you can. Hold the pain a little longer if you can. And when you're ready, we're gonna give this pain more space, this joy more space with our voice in three, in two, in one, big, beautiful exhale. Yeah, shaking it all out. Letting it go. There you are. There you go. Yes. Beautiful. This is our last song here. I invite you to pick up this pace again. Here we go. Belly, chest, exhale. Good. Belly, chest, exhale. Good. Beautiful. You are so beautiful. Do you feel that? It doesn't matter how many people tell us that. If we don't feel it, we are not going to believe it. And it starts with your belief. In these next few breaths, can you breathe belief into your system? There you go. Yes. Beautiful. Keep that going. We're here just a little bit longer. There you are. Good. Believing into every breath. Do you believe one breath at a time is enough? That's all it takes. One breath is enough. Letting every breath you take know this. You are so enough. Thank you. Good. Beautiful. Beautiful y'all. We're getting to that finish line. And in this space, knowing that there's nowhere to go, you have already arrived. What does that feel like? And do you trust that? And if not, I will say it again, there is nowhere to go. You have already arrived. Breathe that. Good. Let your body know I am right here. So beautiful. Wow. And in this final minute, I invite you to pick up the breath even more, only if that's available to you. You'll pick up the speed. And more might mean picking up the depth and slowing it down. So you get to choose. Here we go. We're in our final bit here, moving and shaking as you need. Good. Picking up that speed only if that resonates. Otherwise slowing it down, allowing this juicy breath to be here. What feels like nutrients to you? How would you breathe if it felt nutritious? There you go. Good. One more big inhale. And the biggest exhale yet. Good. Shaking it out. Shake your wrist. Sticking out your tongue. Letting go of anything that's been holding you back. All of it. Shake it out. There you go. Yes, nature. Yes, Charlotte. Yes, Angie. That. There she is. There he is. Now take that big, beautiful breath, that big, final breath. When you are ready, sip in the golden light, the yellow light, and all the lights of color that you need. Sip it in. Feel the rainbow fill up your lungs and hold it at the top. There you go. There, that space, that freedom. Hold it. Lean into any fear. Let the fear know that you love them so much and you are so thankful. Thank you for gifting me, for showing me what I need. I wouldn't know if it wasn't for you, so thank you. Feeling the resonance in your hands. Feeling the resonance in your heart. Holding your breath for as long as you need. And only when you are ready, I invite you to exhale it out as slowly as you can, maybe pursing your lips as little as possible. Letting out one small breath at a time. There you go. Just witnessing how incredible. What a gift. If you're still holding your breath, you can do that. If you feel called to release your breath, you can. And if you've done that already, coming back to really strong, soft inhales through the nose and out the mouth. Letting your emotions move through you. If your body wants to move in any way, give her the tender care. Give him a hug. Allow every part of you to be so welcome in the space. And just focusing on one breath at a time. One tear at a time. One smile at a time. And really feeling into the resonance that you are. This is not outside of you. This is in the depths, the depths of you. Feeling this golden light coming through the nose, making its way down the throat, into the heart, down the spine. Feeling it all the way to your hips, into our knees, all the way down to our feet. Do you feel that? That is you. She is so beautiful. He is so amazing. Unbecoming everything we thought. All of it. Coming back to the sacred geometry that you are. The spark of light. This ignition of fire. A small, beautiful speck to the most amazing, universal collective there has ever been. Letting spirit move through you, one breath at a time. Making space. There you go. You are the most powerful activation the world has ever seen. Always, every time. Because you are the collective. Every breath you take is not just for you. There's a much bigger picture. And knowing that the work that you are doing right now, just by being you, is giving the most beautiful upgrade to our planet. So thank you. Every single one of you counts. Whether you're on this physical call, in resonance to this call, in another dimension with this call, or listening to this replay after the call. This, this is the gift. It's you. Authentic, raw, unpolished, real. This version of you. Wow. Giving yourself a few more moments of spaciousness before we come back. I want you to receive what did you get? What is available to you in this moment? You might not have heard earlier beneath the noise. What has shown up for you? Nothing happens to us. It's always for us. So what showed up for you today? The awareness is the first step. We cannot be aware if there's too much mud. So now that the veil is open, what is here? And when we have a clear understanding of what that is, can you allow yourself to anchor that into the body? Can you allow it to marinate and ground and land? Maybe taking your fingertips and placing them on your heart to feel the physical presence of taking that clarity that you are receiving and allow it to penetrate into every cell in your body? And feeling the physical beat of your heart that is real. There's your proof. You can feel it. Sometimes we need to feel it to see it, not the other way around. You feel your heart. You'll never physically be able to see your heart. But you can feel it, therefore you see it. And then allowing this grounding, feeling the earth holding you up, feeling the physical support under your hands, under your shoulders, under your feet, under your head. And just feeling so incredibly thankful and grateful that you said yes to today. And that it is a choice to continue to say yes again and again and again. Thank you, God. Thank you, Source. Thank you to every spirit on this call. Wow. And then feeling the love in your heart. I want you to feel it start to rise into your throat. Feeling love in your throat. Feeling the spaciousness open. Allowing it to rise behind the eyes. What does it feel like to feel love behind your eyes? Hold it there for a moment. Feel the warmth. And when you feel ready to open your eyes through that lens of warmth, of kindness, surrender, gently start to allow yourself to come back into this dimension. Taking your time. Giving yourself space. Breathing in the change. Breathing in the truth. Forgiveness, compassion. Slowly starting to wiggle your hands, wiggle your feet. Oof, even mine are tingling. Whoa. Maybe rolling your head, maybe bringing your shoulders up to your neck. Maybe, oof, I just cracked my neck. Nice stretch overhead. This, right here. This is it. This is the stuff. And then slowly making your way back to the screen. And if you need more time, you can stay in the space that you're in. I'm just going to gently bring us back to open our hearts together as a collective. And before doing that, I'd love for us to just take our hands. I'm sure you feel the pulse. It's like so palpable right now. Just place it on your heart for a minute and just giving yourself what you need. Maybe it's, I see you. I feel you. I support you. I honor you. I respect you. Wherever we have felt a void or need, our unmet need, can we give that to ourselves? I see you. I love you. I support you. I celebrate you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah. Taking one final breath together. Beautiful inhale. And a nice sigh. I think my voice came back for the session slightly. Oh, what a recalibration that was. Holy moly. Holy moly, Danny. I see you. Yes. Jean, Rea, good work. Charlotte, holy shit. Yeah, Christine. And all of you who aren't on camera, Veronica, Erica, Howard, Sad, Natalia, everybody. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Wow, 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 wow. Every time, every time. Even if it felt hard today, it's what you needed. And know and trust it's for you. It's always for us. How are we feeling? Put it in the chat. What is here now? If your hands can type. Mine would be like this right now. I have tet me myself, even though I didn't even do the breath work. What is here right now? Ecstatic. Thank you. You're so welcome, Valerie. Yeah. Oh, you're welcome, Annie. Yes, 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 yes. Peace. Thank you so much. Yes, Delmar. Relaxation and, did you say giggles? Oh, tingles, tingles. Yes, all the tingles. You guys will feel tingles after this. Go ground yourself. You can take a bath, a shower, or just put your feet in the soil for a moment and like let yourself literally resonate with nature. It's going to be so good for you. The exact state of being. Yeah. Beautiful Jean. Grateful and able to release control. What does it feel like to love behind your eyes is exactly what I need to hear and feel. Yeah. Yes, Esther. When we're not seeing and we're just seeing from a place, how can we start to love already before we even open our eyes? So beautiful. Grace, wow. Yeah. I'm so grateful for you too, Grace. Angie Bliss Floating Peaceful Free Harmony Soft. Mmm, protection. Sublime, sacredly sublime is so good. Wow, 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 wow. 1111, make a wish. Holy shit for anyone on the West Coast right now. Let's do it. Boom. Holy moly, moly. Thank you for pointing that out, Connie. Yes. Okay, I would love to open up the space. If anyone's feeling called to share their hearts, and I invite you to stay. We'll be on till 11:30. I have some juicy yummy stuff coming up after this. And I really want to hear what is so true, so raw, so authentic in your heart right now. You can either unmute yourself or there's a react button. If you look down, there's like a little heart. And you can click the hands up emoji and then it'll let me put you guys in an order. And I can probably take a few shares here or question if you have it. I'm happy to answer anything. What do we have? What is so here in this moment? This golden projection using the voice. When you use your voice, everyone else can hear it. It resonates the field. What is here? Y'all shy today? No way. I don't feel shyness in this group.
Go ahead and share.
Yes, who's there? Sarah. Hi, beautiful.
Hi.
Hi.
So usually in my breathwork sessions, the three-part breath is usually very rigid and like analytical, I guess is the best way I would describe like belly, got to do the belly, then got to do the chest. And today, before I joined you, I chose a little intention card and it was flow. And so between the belly and the chest, it literally flowed together this time instead of being so separate. And it was really a big release, to be honest with you. And then you had said something about fear during the practice and I kind of just got this epiphany of like, thank you fear for your protection of trying to protect me, but no, thank you. Like I can protect myself, you know? So kind of just a little intuition there of like, I got this. And accepting and appreciating where the fear and why it comes in. But like, hey, pump the brakes a little. I got this. So that was, it was a great session. Thank you.
Sarah, thank you so much for sharing that. And it goes to show to the power of intention. You know, sometimes we show up and just breathe because someone said so, but you had an intention of flow. So by bringing in flow, suddenly everything starts to move in that way. And it's so beautiful to hear your reflections and everything that's come through for you. And I know you've done many of these with me and it's incredible how it's so different every time. Like you cannot guess what it's going to look like. So I just, I love having you in the field and yeah, thank you so much for your voice. Yeah. Nature. Terry. Oh, it's Terry. I've been calling you nature this whole time.
I don't have the hijab, so I look different.
We love nature anyway. The more nature, the better. Let's go.
I have never had a breath, breathwork experience like this before. As also Sarah said, I had a always hard time like bringing the three-part breath together. And, and well, I had things, traumas, lots of traumas from epilepsy and things like that. So I was like the stuck fascia, the scar tissue. But there was one point where just like kind of went like, here, I just felt it open up and just like let it pop. It was just like a warmth and love. My word was self-love. And I just felt, I felt like it's okay. I just went with it and I don't know how to explain it, but after that I started to see, which I know they have lots of spirits, guides and guards, as we all do, but there's certain ones and certain ones that I know that come to me at certain times when I need to work on that love aspect of myself. And they were like saying, come, look, look, to take me off. But I was so in my body. But it's just so, so amazing to like really feel a part of the entire, what we are, this, 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 how do you say this? I was in English, the red. You know, like a mosquito, not mosquito net, the net of everything. I felt that I was connected to the nets, netted everything else, everybody else. I knew, I knew what I was to do, where I'm in, the perfect spot. And then I saw my higher self. She's so beautiful. And then I just, I just don't know. I just felt so peaceful. I'm crying because I'm so happy. I know, but I don't know. It's just so beautiful. I'm just so blessed that I finally have figured out how I can use this because I've struggled with breathwork. But I somehow knew today when I was like, no, I have to come today. I have to come today. So I'm so very grateful for all of you beautiful ladies. And if there's gentlemen that I can't see, thank you too. Just for holding that space and to see all these people I've seen before in Egypt and new faces as well too. It's just, it's amazing what we It's just, it's amazing when we come back together as a collective and we can resonate and it is true coherence. And I think the more you work with this, Michelle, in this way, it's just you're, you're gonna grow and help so many more people. And with your intention given to me and all of us today, taking that to help many other people as well. So let's keep on building this beautiful light and love and truth and trust in this beautiful world we have with us. Thank you everyone. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Terry. Okay, two things I wanna say, one, that really stood out for me is you said I was in my body. And I know oftentimes it's easier to be outside the body, even in meditation, sometimes we're like, oh, it's way better out here. But being in the body is hard. So actually giving yourself enough time and trust to stay there. Even if it feels a little painful, there's so much love. It's insane, it's so, and like, this is beautiful proof, you know, Terry, you're proof here that like if you just stay in the body, like what can be possible? And I also wanted to, I was in Egypt with Terry, there's a couple of gals here on here too in Egypt. You're such a space holder. And I feel like in hearing your voice today, it sounds to me like you really allowed yourself to step out of space holding and actually be held. Like you got to like just be held so beautifully. And I didn't do that, you did it, you said, yes, I'm here, like let me be held. And there's so much magic in that, I, I just honor your experience and I, I thank you for being a part of this. This is, yeah, really, really beautiful. Thank you Terry.
Yeah, I shifted that from, how do you say, to like always having to give everybody else to not like a selfishness, but a selflessness. Where I had put myself, so that's a beautiful change that I think that's, I'm just very excited to keep moving forward. And that's why she came to me, you know, so I hope, let's hear more beautiful experiences or, thank you.
Thank you Terry, thank you, thank you. All right, I'll jump on with Christine, jump in.
Michelle, what can I say, you have so moved me. That's actually my first proper breathwork session. And because I've got COPD, I was reluctant always to join in breathwork. But I've done your ones on the Orion and I thought, I'm going to go to this, I feel called. And it was so good, oh, honest to God, it was so good. And getting the movement and getting something shifted towards the end during the last. And you played my favorite piece of music for coming out.
Which one? Which one was it?
Avril Par, I think it's called. Avril Par, that there, this cello and I just love that to bits. I play it quite often when I'm wanting to be in, in quiet and serenity. But just being able just to give voice to that release at the end there and I was moved to tears and, and, and just to come into your authentic being in your own body and not worrying what anybody else is thinking about you. You just don't care, it's just you and you have to get that release. And I don't know what else to say, Michelle, except thank you. And it's so wonderful that we have Zoom and I can talk to you, I can't get to Egypt and I can't get to these places in Europe, but here I am with you.
Egypt's here with us, I have it in the cup. This is my, my Egypt cup that I got, so I brought those codes in here with us.
I've been to Egypt, I'm on before, but I can't go on the big groups now. But yes, it was so, it's so wonderful that you can do this with us over Zoom and, and we can all be together in spirit and join that beautiful essence of everyone, I just loved it, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, thank you Christine. Connie, jump on. All right, I'll take one more here Connie, Connie.
Oh yeah. Yeah, I thought in the end it felt like a real unity, like, like one heartbeat. Sort of all over the world, yeah, yeah. With all us together, yeah, it was beautiful, thank you so much, yeah. And that all the fixed things in yourself, they, by creating the space, that it all starts floating. Yeah, like freely floating and dissolving really, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was magic, thank you.
You're so welcome.
Very much.
We really are from all over the world. I think doing this 10 AM, I kinda like it because I get tired by 6 PM EST, to be honest with you guys. I'm always like, oh God, and then I'm anticipating it the whole day. I have so much energy in the morning, minus today because I'm a little bit sick, but doing a morning session was nice. And then I get to hit all Europe. I know there's a lot of you in Europe here today, right? I feel like we've got a lot coming from the Aquarian Renaissance too, so I'm so happy that like we can literally be from New Zealand, Europe, and we're all creating a collective field and it can be just as powerful as in person, it's wild. Yeah, thank you Connie, thank you so, so much, it's beautiful to see you. I saw Connie, I think it was in London and Paris, right? Paris and London is awesome, yeah. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. So y'all, this is your reminder, this wasn't me or the music, you know, this is you going, oh, I know, this is a yes. Why, why? We don't know sometimes and you just go, uh huh, and you lean in with your body and your body literally guides you, where do you gotta go? Sometimes we make decisions that make no sense, but they make all the sense. Sometimes we don't know where we're going until we get there and we're like, oh yeah, this is, I know exactly why I'm here. But when we let the mind get in the way, there's so many more obstacles in the way because we think we wanna go one way when really we wanted to go somewhere else. So just to really, if there's one thing I would love for y'all to walk away with is just to continue to trust your body and to continue to trust your resonance and your dissonance. When you feel out of whack, where am I feeling dissonant? Is this a body thing? Is this an emotional thing? Is this a spiritual thing? Like, and how can I come back into resonance with myself? How can I come back into my body? And feel good in there, even with pain. It's not a bypass, we know this is never a bypass, but we can feel through our pain and that is so beautiful. So I'm gonna pivot really quick because I have y'all for about seven more minutes. Oh Christine, did you wanna add something real quick? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say your energy as well, Michelle, your, your joy of life is so infectious. I, I just love that energy you give us and it makes the, the whole process easier.
Thank you Christine, yeah, thank you so much.
I forgot to say that earlier, I'm in Scotland by the way.
Oh yeah, I love it, I gotta go to Scotland next. Did Ireland, it's amazing, yeah. Amazing, well, thank you guys. And what you're feeling is my heart, whether you wanna call it joy or whatever it is that you're feeling, it's just when you actually land into your heart, all your work, everything you do, it doesn't matter what you do. I used to be an actress, I was working in television for years, my heart wasn't there anymore, I had to pivot. That doesn't make sense, things were working, it was actually doing what I always wanted, but for some reason it was like, I wasn't, suddenly it's like it made no sense in my brain, but my body was saying something else. And so I pivot and so maybe I'll go back, but I won't until it's in my heart again, like this is my heart, this breathwork is my heart, helping people right now is my heart. And that might pivot, shift, change, call it a breathwork facilitator, call it an energetic worker, a Reiki master, like those are just titles that we assign ourselves, but that's irrelevant to what the actual work is and the work is us and just showing up with our hearts the most authentically as we can. And I invite that for you as well. Because this feeling you feel from me is palpable and that is something people can feel from you when you choose you. So amazing, it's such an incredible thing. So I'm going to pivot here, I'm gonna bring in an offering that I have. Some of you on this call are in there, Sarah, I see you, I don't know if Ruby's in here. I know, I don't know if Lauren's in here too, there's a couple of you already. She Code is a beautiful women's program. We did it earlier this year, it was epic. Gentlemen, if this one's not for you, sorry if you're on this call, you can listen if you want, but this one's more for the ladies. It is a space just like this where we can come on and we can talk and we get to do the thing and we get to show up so raw. In a space where we can be in a collective and then use it and integrate it into our lives in so many different ways. Every week is something different. I still don't know what it's gonna be just yet, I actually choose things on the day because it has to be in resonance. So when I plan things too much in advance, like I'll have like little ideas, but the feminine, the receptive way, which is what I think is the most beautiful way to exist, is to really listen to what you need now, today. And then also attuning to what the women need too, it's like, okay, I thought we needed this, but ooh, this is what's showing up, let's move with this. And that will involve so many different embodiment practices, somatic practices, learning how to stay in your body but integrating it. So now y'all have had a session today and it feels really good, but now the work is, starts now. It's like, okay, we have this big revelation, how do I actually start to plug this into my day to day? How do I stay in community and stay in resonance? And having other women to speak and be with is such an incredible experience to keep that alive. It is such important upgrades and such important work. It's like this little portal, this little 5D portal we can tap into together and also talk about the things that everyone else goes like this, you know? People ask me questions and sometimes I answer and they're like, what the heck did she just say? And I'm like talking about vibration and energy and everything. And then I don't care, even if it's like a little sprinkle of like, eh, to someone and it gently opens them even just this much. I did my job, right? And so just being able to have other people to have these conversations is so beautiful. It's eight weeks, it starts in September. For anyone who is on this call, I have 777 bucks off, which is 50% if you sign up by 12 o'clock today. That means, actually, let's extend it Katie, we're gonna move it to 1 o'clock because I went over on time here. We'll extend it to 1 o'clock today, 50% off. Anyone who books a call, actually Katie, did you put that in the, do you wanna put a link? I can't see the chat right now, let me just check here. And please excuse my voice, this is the best I can do right now. It's slowly leaving. Oh, I can't see you guys, hold on, if you guys are saying something, how do I get out of? I only see Sadie's message, hold on, let me, I won't be able to see what y'all are saying, hold on.
Were there chats? There is main chat to the left of, like on top of your chat.
Oh, I see you, oh. Oh Jean, how many weeks? Okay, cool, I see it now, I just opened it, thank you, this helps me so much so I can answer your questions. Okay. Eight weeks, Jean, to answer your question, we start most likely the first week of September. The exact date, the exact timing depends on how many Europeans sign up. It will be the timing that I'm gonna kind of maneuver with. It's two hour calls, with that you get unlimited breathwork. Any activations I have, you get discounts off of everything, I have libraries of meditations and breathwork that we'll have just for you guys, we have a community just for you guys. What else is on there Katie, that I can think of? Oh, we have like a whole community that we create. And we'll be doing activations on activations on activations, opening portals on portals on portals and getting to really start to take it and show up, you'll see the difference of the alignment in your body when you start to use somatics. I can't emphasize this enough, how it's so life transformational and life changing. So yeah, eight weeks, once a week. And let me actually pull this up for you guys, I forgot I actually made like a thing here.
Michelle, confirm that the calls will be on Tuesdays?
I don't have a full confirmation of that just yet, oh, did that come up? That's it, it was a most likely, but again, it depends on my, my Europeans. I just was in Europe a lot, so there's a lot of people that I met from Europe that I know were very excited for She Code. So that'll be a TBD, but I do love Tuesdays, Tuesdays feel good, might just be a change of time so we can accommodate. Hold on, let me see if I can open up this chat again. Are there any other questions coming through Katie that I'm not seeing? Oh Sarah, actually Sarah, can I get you in on here? Sarah, jump on for a second. Sarah did our last She Code and yeah, if you feel called to just mention maybe what it was like for you.
Yeah, Michelle's She Code was so rewarding to the tune of, I've signed up for the second session, I enjoyed it so much. Obviously you guys can tell by Michelle's energy, she's such a beam of light and creating the safe environment for like-minded women to meet, you know, once a week for, for two hours is so rewarding. I, I've learned so much about myself, my true authentic self and some of the work is hard, but it's eye-opening and it's really rewarding and I can't recommend it enough. If there's any little pool that you guys feel like you want to join, the deal she's offering right now is unheard of, so you need to hop on it, yeah. So yeah, I, I highly recommend it, I hope to see you ladies there.
Thank you so much Sarah, yeah, so epic. Man, when we finished that, that play, I call it a playground, not a program, because I don't want it to feel like we need to achieve fucking spirituality, you know? It's like unlayering, unbecoming, taking it off and actually showing up, it's so important to me. So I called it a playground so we can enjoy the process of the hard work and the accountability of being together. So thank you Sarah so much for that. So I'm gonna open up real quick here. Am I sharing my thing yet? No, okay, share screen. Let's open this up real quick here. You guys, I think my fever is officially started, can you see it? I'm getting hot and I'm starting to sweat. This is the recalibration, I trust it, it's doing exactly what it needs. Okay, let me open this up for you all. Where is it? Oh, present, there we go. Can you guys see this okay? Beautiful, okay, so discount code, Codex 50 is the 50% off, that'll be open for another hour and a half. Honestly, the mind will come up with everything, if you just feel a yes in your body, just listen. You will never regret it, your body will always give you what you need. So like Sarah said, if you have that little inkling, that little lean forward, even if it doesn't make sense, go for it. And like she said too, the, this, this price is not something that I've offered before, so if that is something you're like, oh hell yeah, just go for it. And then if you need more time, I will also honor if you feel like you need a call to talk a little bit more about it before committing. If you sign up for a call before 1 o'clock today, Katie, if you can put that in the chat, actually. And you sign up to jump on a call with me, I can honor the 50% as well, I think that's fair. And that way we can get some time to talk about it a little bit more as well. So yeah, eight week virtual program. The abbreviation is she, so for me, that's shining her excellence. And that's your, you in your most authentic, you in your embodied brilliance. And I think today you guys got a little taste of what it feels like to be in your embodied brilliance, which is not a mind thing, it's certainly an embodied thing. And getting to dance in your, in duality, in your harmony and actually not just talking about it and researching it and reading about it, but becoming it like within your own body and then integrating that into life. So that's really my intention behind She Code and Shining Her Excellence. So if you are someone who's been feeling burnt out from hustling and grinding, which is all of us, nobody is exempt from that. This is a really beautiful opportunity to really start to have an outside cheerleader and reflector, let's call it, who can help pinpoint where you might subconsciously be doing something that you don't even notice that is a neuropathway that you are holding on to, that could just be a small tiny shift to make all the difference with everything, your relationships, your work, all of it. So I'll be doing some coaching, oh, I forgot to add too, I added Voxer on this round as well. So throughout the week, there will be some designated times where you can voice note me. So as you're going through something, you can voice note me and you'll have access to me that way, myself and Katie, who's also my assistant, she's on this call right now, I think she's also sick, she's off camera today. Everyone's sick, we're all recalibrating. So that'll be also an additional top up as well, so definitely take, take advantage of this. Also, anyone who leans heavily in their masculine, the thought, the thinking too much versus being the doers. This is really a beautiful way to really put that into practice. I have three pillars for She Code, they're just general pillars, they're soaking in the information, that's our awareness, that's like actually realizing what is out of sync, what is working, washing it, which is like getting in there, doing the work like Sarah said. And allowing those neural pathways to open in so many different ways, different practices will do. And then wearing it, in our last program or playground, we showed, we each had to create something at the end of the playground and put it into the world. And we got to be witnessed in that and held in it and it's scary sometimes to put our voices in ourselves and be seen in the world. And just having that support from all the other women and speaking from such a raw place, so healing. So we may do something similar like that again for this round, but that's the where, it's the integration is what the where it is for me. So again, eight weeks, it'll be two hours per call. Unlimited live and breathwork meditation sessions. Oh yes, I always have special guest speakers come on, last time we had Danielle, maybe we'll have her again, she's an amazing light worker. She does light language and she's like, I have her coming to my Sedona retreat, it's like just, whoa, she's whoa. And I don't say that often, it's hard to whoa me and she woes me. And then also receive exclusive discounts on different retreats and things like that. Weekly journal prompts, customized programs that I make for you, like I mean, the whole thing is so nicely put together. Here it says eligible to sign up for the June Plant Medicine Retreat, so that is now actually August. So for those of you that were wanting June, we had a pivot and a move and change in date and time. So if you're feeling a plant medicine call, which specifically is psilocybin, more than happy to talk to you more about that. That changed my life, the reason we're even on this call right now is because of that journey. I've only done one big one and it literally shape-shifted everything that I do. So if you're curious to even just learn more about plant medicine, book in for a call, I think Katie, if you can. if you're curious to even just learn more about plant medicine, uh, book in for a call. I think Katie, if you can put the book, a discovery call again, so they can see that link. So happy to talk about it. And maybe I can do like another plant medicine discovery call like I did last time in a group, if that's helpful. Um, so that's August. Oh, here, actually, I think I have it on here. Oh, wait, before I move to retreats, there's also She Code Plus. So a bunch of you, especially from the Aquarian Renaissance, have been asking me about private mentorship. I can do that for a small group. Um, so if that's something you're like, ooh, that's something I want to do. Also, just book that discovery call and we can talk about that as well. So that's, you can do She Code as well as private mentorship on top of that, okay? Yeah. So if you want to feel deeper connection to yourself, your relationships, feel healthy, energized, inspired, improve focus and attention for all my ADHDers in here, including myself, um, being able to enhance your performance, have more you time in your day, like this is the playground for you. So again, um, 50% off until 12 PM. We'll make it till one. And then 40% tomorrow until 12 o'clock. Now I'm going to move into the Plant Medicine Retreat. So again, this one is August 22 to 24. It's a weekend. And this is for the woman who's really wanting to do the deep dive. This is, um, a significant dosage of psilocybin. And, uh, there's a pre-integration plus a post-integration added to this, which is so important. It's everything. The intention and awareness before even doing it is so important. The ceremony is going to be what it's going to be. And then taking the information and doing something with it, that is everything. It is so, so key. So if that's something you're feeling called to, usually it's not, again, it's not a mind thing. It's a, it's a calling and your body goes, I'm a yes on this. Or just an openness, just book your call and I'm happy to talk to you about that. Um, and tell you so much more about this beautiful retreat, all-inclusive meals, everything is taken care of. Um, and it's in Joshua Tree. So it's in a beautiful portal out there. Lastly, I have a few spaces left. This is almost complete. So if this is one that you want to jump on, do it now. Um, this is October 24 to 28. That's the Sacred Cheese Sedona Retreat. Last year was so beautiful. This year is going to be even more epic. There's a bunch of you on this call right now that are already coming. Um, so if this is something you're interested in, definitely apply for this. Um, I'll jump on a call with you ASAP. And, um, yeah, this is, uh, Danielle is actually going to be there, uh, the, the light language gal. And I have yoga, we have Millie coming in from Estonia, doing a clay art workshop. So y'all can make this beautiful art and take that home with you. So much embodiment and just magic and femininity and beautiful women. So if that's something you're feeling called to more sisterhood and that sort of thing, then this would definitely be the retreat for you. So that's it. So discount again, Codex 50 for 50% off, Codex 40 for 40% off. And, um, I'm going to open this up to a Q and A. If you need to pop off, that's absolutely okay. Let me do the stop share. And if y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer any, i.e. anything that, uh, was just talked about. And I didn't see the chat. So if anyone's signing up right now, awesome. This is so cool. Who do we got? Any questions? Any questions? Got me for a couple more minutes. Jean, I see a question coming out of your mouth. Am I right? Or am I right? Let me unmute you. Hold on. Here you go. Hold on. Unmute.
There we go. Oh, my God. Michelle, I am so grateful for this time. This, and, and if this is an inkling of what She Code is like, I just love this collective every time I, by the way, hi, Sue Ann, I just have to say it, and Terry.
Yeah, and Natasha was here too.
Of course, Natasha. My girls. This vibration, this, this, this situation that you have placed us in, this, this, this etheric room that we are in right now, which is the all, is the place to be. I mean, it's crazy not to invest in yourself, in the world, in, in, in your own heart. Um, I'm having a little trouble with the website though. I don't know if anybody else is. I'm going to go on my computer. Because when I hit the ticket, when I hit to check out, it says, tell me the number of tickets. And I don't see a place. I'm trying to hit that little thing. I can't put in one.
And is that, was that for today's session or was that for She Code?
That was for She Code. I'm trying to sign up while you were talking.
Okay, Katie, do you want to?
You know what, maybe I have to go on my.
Yeah, let me check on that.
On my laptop?
Yeah, Katie's going to check for you right now. It should work though. Um, let me see.
I'm going to try it on a laptop because.
So there's two types of tickets. There's a she code and full, and that's the one that you want. And then you can select one in the quantity.
Yeah, but I, I don't know. I'm, uh, you know what? Maybe it's Foxfire that's not allowing it.
You know what, Jean?
I'm going to go on my laptop. I'm getting it done.
First of all, so excited. But also, when we're done this call, I can, uh, jump on a Zoom with you right after. I'll walk you through it so we can do it together.
All right. I think I'm still going to try it on my laptop with you because this, this is, you know, I just want to get it done. Because this is an investment in not only myself, my sanity, my time with, with women that I just love. Like, there was a point in our work together where everything broke through, like, and that's the space that I need to realize exists at all times. And we're in such a dynamic in this, you know, just different, different parameters and boundaries that have been set for us that we need to really get strengthened in the fact that those boundaries aren't not real and what we do together is real. And the more you could spend time in that space, it becomes the larger visualization, the larger image, the, you know, reality, that that is your truth. And you get it no matter where you're walking and what time of day or night it is and what you're facing. And I could just cry because this is really the, you said it, you said, this is the way we change the world. And this is the way we change the world. This is the way we change the world, not rallying, but trusting yourself. And you said something really interesting, like important in the beginning about like, you know, we are complete. Yeah, you ask, you ask, you know, all of the technology assistants that are out there a question and they give you a really interesting answer and a good spin. And you know, it's great, but you know what? When you don't, this is why I'm into code. Okay. Because this is how I, it's the gym for the etheric. It's the gym for your intuition. It's, it's the gym for all of the things that you are internally that, that are boundless. And that's it. That's all I have to say. And I love you. I love you all.
I love you. I love you more.
I don't even, I can't even believe you're in my life. I'm so happy to have you in my life.
I love you. Thank you so much for sharing all that. I wrote down a third gym because I think I'm going to use that. I love it. So good. It's like, welcome to the third gym. We don't know what the heck's going to happen in the next two hours, but something really potent is about to go down. So we just trust it, surrender into the space.
So start lifting those dumb bells, ladies.
Yeah, totally start lifting those. Oh, my God, I need, I need you.
Oh, Terry, I love your smile.
So good. Thank you. Oh, my God, I think my voice is going even a little more. But you know what's so beautiful, y'all? It stayed for you up until now, like up until everything that was needed to be said, I trusted that Source would let it come out until it couldn't anymore. So here we are. Um, thank you, Jean. Anybody else, um, have a, uh, any questions, i.e. uh, She Code or the retreats or anything else, um, that you're just curious about? Maybe someone else on the call might be curious about the same thing. Any last minute shares? We feel complete, okay?
I just want to say, um, Sue Ann, you messaged me about, uh, having an issue with checking out for She Code. Um, if you need any extra help, I DM'd you, but just, I know you're driving. So if you want to email me, I'll put my email in the chat and you can send me any of, any of your questions. I can definitely help you out there.
Yes, Sue Ann. If I had more voice, I'd be louder right now. Sue Ann, I'm happy to also text you. I'll send you a text too, to make sure that that goes smoothly for you, okay? Yeah. And don't worry about us hearing you. You're driving. Focus on your driving. But yeah, my heart is so full. Jean, Sue Ann, anyone else who decides to gift yourself this, like, like I said, it's not just for us. It is so much bigger. It is so much greater than just doing work. It is a mycelium, a connected, a collective. So, um, yeah, book that call. Even if you're like a maybe, book the call so we can talk more if that's what you need. I'm so here to just like guide you and support you in any way you need. And I'm just so honored that y'all jumped on. I love you. Thank you, Patricia and Sad, Erica, Dani, Valerie, Sue Ann, Marlene, Alexandra, Christine, Jean, Connie, Leah. Now Leah, if I forgot anyone, I love you. Have the most beautiful rest of your day. Hit me up with any questions. And I can't wait to see some of you in September. It's going to be epic. All right. Bye, everyone. So much love. Bye.